The regular Rev. City Council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM, January 18th, will now come to order. Roll call.
Councillor Rosey.
Here.
Councillor Kuivinen.
Here.
Councillor Purpich.
Here.
Councillor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Visalovic.
Here.
Item C, approval of minutes. Minutes of city council meeting, December 21st, 2021. Minutes of city council meeting, January 4th, 2022. And minutes of city council workshop, January 11th, 2022. Anybody have any questions or changes? If not, I'll call for a motion and we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Motion made by Rosey. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Tonight's agenda. We do have a closed session, everybody's aware of. The last two items, 10 and 11. Is there any questions, deletions, or additions for, uh, new business? If not, I'll call for a motion. Have we approved tonight's agenda as it's printed?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis. We have a support.
Support.
Joe, was that you?
Yes.
Support by Kuivinen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. No appointments or presentations. Consent agenda is approval of payroll, December 16th through the 31st, 2021. You have a motion to approve the payroll?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich. Do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rosey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. No public hearings at this time, no unfinished business. And we're jumping right into new business. Application to conduct excluded bingo for the Knights of Columbus, 301 Adams Avenue, Evolith. That's kind of a usual thing, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
No one has any questions or discussion? I'll call for a motion. Have we approved this application?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Kuivinen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number two, 2022 Animal Control Contract. Cheap. Is there anything different than what we usually do?
Uh, no, it's not bad. It's an early contract with Ken and Gritters. They've been handling their service and, uh, nothing's changed. The recent things stayed the same.
Stayed the same?
Yep.
Have you had any problems since they moved to Ely?
Well, uh, they did that. They had a long discussion with, uh, their staff out there and they said, "We should not see any construction of that service here." So I think two of their members have been talking about this.
Okay. So if they take a dog in that nobody claims it goes to Ely?
Well, yes, they have. I guess there's still some stuff on Magnum, but I'm not sure how much.
Okay.
I did have one conversation with a person that had to go to Ely to get their dog. And of course, I told him, "Well, maybe you should sort of watch it later." Well, you know, I don't have a filter. So, it's the way it is.
Facts are the facts.
That's right.
Remember years ago when the police or public works employees had to handle those dog things? Oh, was that a frickin' nightmare, you know?
We had our own kennel.
Yeah, that's right. And somebody had to watch that.
I was a dog catcher for a couple of weeks there. Donnie Deloxis, we put Rosey there. He's a pretty good dog guy. I filled that kennel up so fast.
Yo, you, you want to make an enemy, pick up their dog.
Oh, God.
You can, you can write them a ticket for speeding, anything. Pick up their dog and you made an enemy then. That really got personal.
Pick up the dog or give them a perky.
Yeah, oh, that's another one. Years ago, when they had the meters in town? And you had the guy who checked the meters, Bill Sunley? And, uh, all them guys used to take the ticket off of one car, put it on another, because a lot of people wouldn't look. They'd just go pay it. It was only a buck. All the tricks of the trade when you were a kid, that's what you learned. If no one has any questions, call for a motion. Have we approved the animal control contract with contented gritters?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Rosey. Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number three, quotation for computer logging system upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant.
It wasn't bound to happen, right there?
Hey, Jerry, this particular vendor, do we have some, like, support if you got a problem? This new system, or come out there and kind of troubleshoot it?
Yeah, we've broken a few other dogs that they've done in the sense they did fail its ownership.
Okay.
System and I guess, uh, they're really happy with them, so.
As long as you have some support, uh, if you got a problem out there. Anybody have any questions? If not?
Um, what's, uh, what option are we looking for here, Jerry?
It'd be option number one, and this is just a basic of a basic. I know it seems expensive, but it is a computer on steroids that we call, um, keeps all our daily logs. And our other computer has Windows 7 and it can't be replaced anymore. And we've worked on it, we've worked on it numerous times, but, yeah, this is just a basic, uh, download all the hardware. Um, you get the monitor, the computer. And they come there, they change all the graphics and they bring everything that we need to read every day onto this new computer.
And I guess the reason we're taking option one, because it's the fastest? Is that, I mean, the quickest time to turn it over?
It's the cheapest and the quickest right now, but in, there are a few other, uh, businesses, new business here, we're looking at possibly going on a bond for more communication upgrades. And that would, that would, uh, that would go in further detail. But this is just to get us going right now because we need it.
Okay.
Is this particular system buildable? I mean, we can expand in the future if we want to?
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call for a motion and we go with the recommendation for option number one.
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Kuivinen. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number four, quotation from MSA Professional Services for MPCA mandated mandated pilot testing at the wastewater treatment plant. We had a number of lengthy discussions with the MPCA when, Tom Di was on it, with the information, how good it was, how accurate, how current. So that's why we have, uh, this project stretched out to testing and what we're doing, because a lot of the info they had, MPCA, was early 90s. You know what I mean? How, how good is that? Current 30-year-old information, so. When we spend some money on that plant, we'll be spending it the right way. Because you see, a lot of these things are, these are big, big projects. And you do something and it don't solve the problem, then what do you do? But I think it's, uh, it's a good start because, uh, they've been involved with us from the get-go.
And this is something too that we have to really get into right away, right, Jerry?
Yeah, we, we have a timetable to start the process. So we have to start testing the next year. And if that doesn't work, we can go into the next year with more testing. And then, uh, a step for each year that you gotta get to know your committees.
What is it, 2029 we have?
For, for Foss, we got to 2029, March of 2029. And Mercury, we have to be making within a five-year period of the date that they issue a settlement form. So if we're already making up Mercury, that's not going to be a big deal. And a lot of my duties and things are getting out, phosphates in check, we'll probably help them.
Well, I, I feel that if we're gonna, um, support any kind of, uh, mining or anything going on in our area, we might as well start right here with our own City of Evolith, getting it green and getting it shaped up and tested and stuff like that, so. Now, anything we say from here on in about what goes on on the Iron Range, I think it's a good thing if we start in our own hometown and take care of it.
This is kind of what usually goes on with these type of things when you're doing a permit. But with, uh, like you say, the type of information was so dated, they weren't willing to go and get the new information. So they established some testing program where we could do that. Because they agreed, stuff was dated, things have changed. But like I say, you hate to spend millions of dollars on an upgrade and find out you're not meeting spec when it's done.
Yeah.
Because that happens in places. But it's, it's something you expect every so many years. You're always putting money into that. Because I think we have, we have a pretty good track record, because I get a lot of letters from the MPCA, stuff about complimenting the staff and our plant and how it performs.
Let's keep up, keep it up then, I think.
Yeah, that's, I can say we're on top of it.
Yeah.
We want to stay on top. Any other questions? Call for a motion that we accept a quotation from MSA Professional Services?
So moved.
Motion made by Purpich. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Rosey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number five, establish city council committee to review Evolith School Campus Buildings. We got anybody interested? Because I would probably go on there.
I think you and any of those two would be a fine combination.
I will be on, on board with that, Bob.
Yeah, because I think, you know, we seriously gotta take a look and maybe find out a few things, you know, like the heating system, what's, what's that at? And a few, because that's a big part of the community. There's some potential there if everything, you know, the pieces of the puzzle all fit in, because there's a lot of empty buildings around. But that is a beautiful campus, though.
So, is there, uh, somebody within the, that the city knows? I don't know, but could come with us, someone that is, uh, knowledgeable about electrical boiler systems or anything like that, that we can have, that we can rely on him to? Somebody, or him or her, that we could get to go with us and tell us the yes, dos and don'ts and whatever?
Yes, yes. I've spoken to our architect and they have the staff on hand. And we're going to start with a review of that big stack of reports of all the evaluations at the district over the years. So that's going to be our starting point with the architect, so we don't have to read every page. So they can explain it to us, and then we just keep moving down the steps and we'll determine what the steps should be.
We're concerned about the heating system, its capacity.
Sure.
Things like that, you know, what's, you're going to need those people to give us a professional evaluation.
Okay.
Then you can kind of decide when you know the condition of everything, what we can do or what we can't do. So it's a big, big part of the community there.
Yes, it is.
So how many people we need on there, Jackie? Jim and I enough?
You need an alternate?
You want to be the alternate?
Not really, but I will.
You will? Okay, well, you volunteered.
Ouch.
We need the council action on it or not?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I move that we appoint Mayor Visalovic and Councillor Purpich as the primary committee members and Councillor Rosey as an alternate.
And I will support that.
We have a motion and a support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number six, Exhibition B to Resolution 201905 Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades for Mercury and Phosphates. Jerry, what's the deal on that?
Yeah, I guess this is, uh, this is Lord Jacky's line here, but
Oh, I see.
This is part of a bonding bill. No?
I'll take it over. Jerry and I are in this together. So, um, we've talked in the past about these Merck and phosphate standards that you guys just talked about, about those pilot studies. We've also on item seven, talked about technology and communications upgrades. Telemetry from plants to lift stations that are being phased out technology-wise that we need to upgrade. And so we thought that it's going to be a fair amount of money, that the best way to possibly tackle the funding for that is for us to sell a bond, like we do when we do big capital projects. And one of the regulations where when you sell a bond, if you want to get reimbursed for money you've already spent, you have to have this resolution on file that you folks action, that we're going to do this and get reimbursed. So this is just a formality, um, outlined by our bond council pursuant to Minnesota law.
Oh, okay. We need council action on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Call for a motion and we approve. Item number six, Resolution 201905 Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades for Mercury and Phosphate.
So moved.
Motion made by Kuivinen. We have a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number seven, Exhibition B to Resolution 201905 Technology and Communication Upgrades to Wastewater Treatment and Water Treatment and Wastewater Treatment Systems. That's basically two separate motions, the same issue. Anybody else have any questions, Jackie or anything, or? Jerry, if not, a call for a motion and we approve. Item seven?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Rosey. Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number eight, Resolution Accepting Donation for Ambulance Power Cot Upgrade. John, what is that upgrade? Is it different from the cot we have here, or?
It, it'll bring both ambulance cots up to the same level of proficiency and stuff, and save a lot of backs.
Well, how come that this wasn't added on to the original ambulance bid?
It was. It was. It was, but people are now wanting to give us donations to help pay for it.
Yeah.
It was ordered.
We've already approved it. But this will help defray the costs.
Yeah.
Just like when we had our spaghetti feed, that will defray
Correct.
Some also.
Okay, because I
Yeah, we already approved it. It's already there, but we're just collecting some, some funds. And I believe there was an additional donation from, uh, that just came in. I believe that you got the medical, so.
So, when we bid on this new ambulance and we got the, we, we approved everything, this cot was in that bid?
Yes, the upgrade to the cot was in there.
And now we are just accepting money for this?
Correct.
Yeah, offset the costs.
Correct. We haven't paid for it.
Sounds like when we got Baird the dog.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Because I think, uh, I was misled about this whole thing, because I thought it was something that you guys wanted additionally. Okay, but this was on the bid and you guys are, the donations are coming in to support this that we've already, all that makes more sense then. Because I, I, well, no, I know, and I, I, people were asking me and I says, "I don't know what you're talking about." I said, "We approved everything they asked for. And if they didn't ask for this cot, then it's on them." But if we've already approved it, then, okay, I can go with that.
Yeah, I, I answered a few of those questions too. Well, I thought you guys are, we already did, but this is additional money's coming in to help to defray the costs, which we, of course, will accept.
Okay, no, all right.
There was confusion.
We have two, we have two donations from Masabi Range VFW Auxiliary, number 1172 in Evolith, and the Evolith Alks Lodge, number 1161. And no one has any more questions or any further discussion?
Well, I think that's both very generous of both these two entities to come forward like that.
It is, you know, it's investment in the community. I call for a motion that we accept this resolution and send a letter of thanks to each one of the donators here.
So moved.
Motion made by Kuivinen. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item number nine, Purchase Agreement Between the City of Evolith and Independent School District, District number 20909. Conveyance of Real Estate.
So this is about our third time around here. Um, the last time you guys approved the purchase agreement, there was a closing date of December 31st. And, and the title company, for whatever reason, the school's working with them or not, wasn't able to get all the paperwork done. So now I've extended the closing date out. Um, they've done a lot of the paperwork. I've seen some of the paperwork. So this is easier for you to do a new purchase agreement than do an amendment, because I really need that resolution to be dated today. Since I have to hand that off during closing, so this is just.
Is this the purchase of the junior high built, uh, property?
No, this is the school district purchasing the property that the new elementary's on.
Yeah, 40 grand.
Mr. Law Dark, fifth, sixth.
Well, there were some title issues, wasn't there? We had to get cleaned up with that. Yeah.
They're already squared away now. As far as we are, as we like to believe.
Every time you get into a deal, the shoes start dropping.
Oh, God.
Man, I'll tell you. If nobody has any more questions or no further discussion, call for a motion that we approve this purchase agreement, hopefully for the last time.
So moved.
Motion made by Rosey. We have a support.
All support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. We have items 10 and 11, which are closed session with the city council. One, item number 10 is attorney-client privilege. And item number 11 is purchase or sale of property, which is 401 Roosevelt Avenue. And I'd like to have a motion that will allow the council to go into closed session.
So moved.
Jim, you make the motion. Motion made by Purpich. Support by Rosey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next item, Council Presentation and Committee Reports. Does anybody have any?
These, uh, council meetings are coming one day too early. I got two meetings, two meetings tomorrow, H.R.A. and E.D.A.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we've had a, uh, Joint Rec Board meeting. Um, we were requested to have a representative at, at the meeting, and I attended. Gilbert sent two representatives, Vale sent two. Uh, we were also there with, uh, our joint board, with one, one person absent. Uh, they have no direction about which way we want them to go. Uh, the school has had several meetings, none with the joint board. Uh, they've basically said that, uh, they are no longer a functioning part of the Independent School District, because our current school district is not a member of this joint board, as the old Evolith-Gilbert, um, were. They were on the joint board. The joint board consisted of the school district, Evolith-Gilbert, City of Evolith, City of Gilbert, Township of Vale. They do not have any direction about where they're going, and they've heard word that the school is taking over all their rec department, uh, monies because, or entities, whether it was baseball, um, tennis, basketball, uh, anything that has to do with the school and recreation, it's going to be taken over by the school and the two athletic directors. Well, in our joint board agreement, if someone wants to fall out, whether it's City of Evolith, Gilbert, Vale, the school district, needed 365-day notice.
Did we get that?
Not that I'm aware of. Jackie, with me? That's what I read here, section eight, section eight, article two, article eight, section two. Says that if one of the boards or one of the entities wants to leave, we have to have a 365-day notice to all parties. And on the 366th day, the agreement would be, uh, terminated. That person, that entity would be out of the joint board. We had nothing like that. Now, our, having attended the meeting, um, the rec joint board, they just didn't know. They didn't know where, where it was going to go. They got to get ready for the baseball season. Who's going to take over that? The Virginia Rec Board, or Rec Commission, does not have anything to do with the hockey, the baseball, or anything. They've got their own boards, their own entities taking each sport.
Yeah.
And where does that leave Evolith-Gilbert and Vale?
Sounds like you got to create a new entity to handle.
Are we going to allow the City of Virginia and the school district to dictate how we want, uh, to participate? I, I, I don't understand this. The school has not come to us at all. We
Have we formally been notified?
Nothing.
Have they taken official action or anything like that?
Jerry, didn't he, they tell you at some Zoom meeting that they were, they were going to take over?
I was in a Zoom meeting the Monday before all were being, and, uh, that's what they were telling us, is they were planning on doing their community ed, taking all the sports on. All of them. And they said, "Everyone." They didn't leave two on the table. They said, "All of them." And they would take those over.
Who do they say they're taking it over?
The community
That's, that's one of the problems.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have to have a sit-down with somebody then.
I think so.
I think, could you listen to the right thing and, and let's sit down with somebody? Maybe with our lawyers, somebody, and find out what the hell's going on here.
Well, you might have to create a new frickin' entity.
Well, that's fine, but you can't just
Well, we have to have equal representation.
Well, yeah, exactly.
We have to abide by the rules they already set up, too. 365-day notice. Well, you just can't tell everybody you're out. I mean, yeah, no, we got to meet with the means on their side and our side, and let's figure this out, because this, something smells rotten here.
And the other, the other part of this is Craig Homola is, is leaving. He's retiring. The joint board, as it is, if it is non-existent, which I don't believe it is, we need to get someone there to at least monitor our, our programs. Our interests, exactly. We've got baseball coming up, and we have a great participation in baseball and softball.
Well, you know,
Great participation.
One thing you got to look at, this school thing was actually a huge undertaking for this area in a complicated, people think you just merge. It don't work that way. When you've got three communities involved, similar activities, but not the same. It's a huge undertaking. There are going to be some bumps in the road that have to be addressed and talked out.
Well, I, I just
That's why we got to set up a meeting.
It's, I just don't think that we should have been booted. That, I mean, that
I don't think they can legally boot you.
I don't know if that was the intent, but, you know, somebody makes a comment, maybe it was
But how are, how are we going to be representing, who represents us with the, uh, community ed? Who represents the City of Evolith, Vale, Gilbert, and, you know? Somebody has, the, the communities have, this is, the, the school belongs to the community.
What does our
The community doesn't belong to the school.
What does the school board member say?
That was the, that was the other part. They were invited to the meeting. Now, one, now one member or entity from the, person from the school board or the district showed up.
There's the first problem.
I mean
Come on, people, wake up out there.
There's the first problem.
So I, I just don't, I, I don't understand, and I, and I feel that the City of Evolith, Gilbert, and Vale are getting the short end of the stick again. And unless, unless there is, within that community education, there should be a recreation board then. And there should be equal representation all the way around.
I guess you got to have a meeting just to know where everybody's standing. You know what I mean? A face-to-face meeting. Because, you see, it's a complicated thing.
They still want our, they still want our monies, and they still want our fields. And our athletic, you know?
We're starting with a meeting with the superintendent.
Yeah.
There you go. That's, let's go right there.
And
Because I think this can be worked out to anybody's satisfaction. But you got to start talking. You got to have the dialogue.
And I certainly would like our board to, our joint rec board to keep continuing until we hear anything different.
Well, why wouldn't they?
Well, they, they want to know. They, they, Bob, I guess we have to send them a vote of confidence and say, "No, keep going."
Yeah, there are representatives.
Yeah. I mean, Mike Morosky's been there for 20 years. I mean, he's dedicated. We've got, uh, we've got coaches that are, are ready to, uh, you know, take part. We have people that are interested in, in this joint rec board, and I don't think, I think they'd hopefully be asked to be part of the district's, uh, program if we can find out what that program is.
Well, I think the first step, like Jackie, set up a meeting so we can find out what is going on. Because usually the problem is, nobody's talking, and once everybody starts
Or some of the wrong people are talking.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's just, you know,
Yeah.
This whole, this whole school thing, you know, it This whole, this whole school thing, you know, it 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 just bugs me anyway. I, it was inevitable that we were going to consolidate. I get that. But the way it was, um, addressed and everything like that, people weren't in communication and not only that, but. Anybody voted for or against the school district. You had one polling place in Evlith. And the line was out. Up the street, you know? That was, and people got tired of standing in line and waiting because there was no organization in that whole building. So. I don't want this to be thrown at us, you know, down our throat either. I think we have to have some representation up there at the school.
Well, the first step is to. Schedule a meeting there, Jackie. That's, that's the first step. Find out what's going on.
And I guess, Jackie, you tentatively set that for August twenty fifth. Correct?
January.
January.
I was saying August.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Season's over. I was, I was thinking, I was thinking warm weather because I'm not going to, I'm not going to be here. And I just want to make sure that the council knows where I stand on this and.
I think we do.
Yes.
You were almost spinning while you were talking.
I.
It's okay, Jim.
When you, after that beautiful Saturday auditorium, uh, for the hippodrome. All that went, I don't want the city of Evlith to get. We need to keep going.
We don't want to shaft.
No.
Well, there's plenty of Virginia people there too, you know, that's.
Yeah, I mean.
You know what I mean? It's. It's a well-known. That's why, that's why you need a meeting because somebody's, a statement somebody makes, who knows, like I said, with context. Then pretty soon that's what everybody wants to do. And once you start talking, you kind of find out. You get a lot of different feedback and opinions. But yeah, we'll set up a meeting first and see what's going on.
Other than that, I don't have any other comments. I'll be can.
That was plenty good.
Brian, how about you?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm yelling in your ear.
We don't have much. We had our first airport commission meeting of the year and, uh. We switched chairmanship of the board to Virginia and Steve Johnson is now the chair for this year. We figured we'd alternate back and forth. That's, uh, that's about all I've got. Chief, you got anything else to add?
Nothing else there.
Jerry?
Nothing there.
Ellen?
Nothing there.
I see we're getting our, our logging job must be done out there, eh?
Yes.
People didn't realize how big that area was.
No.
Until it got cleared.
Everybody's asking me, what's going on there? What's going on there? Well.
Yeah, they thought.
Could be a lot of things.
Marshmallows and beer out there.
They thought we had just a sliver of land by the road. They didn't realize how far that went back.
If they ever get back to, uh, homecomings and bonfires, there'd be a.
Steph, you got anything to add?
I don't have.
Jackie?
I don't think so.
Carl?
Nothing there.
We got nobody in the audience and that's the end for tonight.